You all for coming, uh, to Spain, there to the regular session of this city of South Fulton. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the closing session. Mr. Clark, if you do, I'll announce that the action may or may not take.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Mayor and members of council, there was no action taken during today's closing session.
Do not entertain a motion to approve the closing session.
Motion to close the closing session.
Properly moved and seconded, any discussion?
Um, just quick, there was no action.
Any discussion, any first discussion? Hearing none, all votes in favor, aye? Prove, that carries unanimously, Mr. Clark. At this time, I'd like to bring up my chaplain, through the invocation of the following sequestered leaders. Let us stand. Let us pray. The gracious God will remind you that your charter says that the earth is the Lord and the fullness thereof, and they that will ever end. Therefore, meaning that the city of South Fulton is yours and the fullness thereof, and they that will ever end. Uh, Mayor and our city council, God has been appointed by you. Every citizen is appointed by you. Cause us to be good and faithful stewards of God, over all that you charge us. So let your wisdom fall upon us, and let us, oh God, be blessed by you and by each other. This we pray, let us all say, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clark, I got kind of carried away, would you do a roll call, please? Mayor William Bill Edwards?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Captain Rowan?
Here.
Councilmember Carmely the Dumps?
Here.
Councilmember Helen the Willis?
Here.
Councilmember Nina the Hilliard?
Here.
Councilmember Rosie Jackson?
Here.
Councilmember Cleve?
Here.
And Councilmember Marcus Baker?
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you do have a court.
At this time, I entertain a motion to approve the consensus agenda.
How many a motion to approve the consensus agenda?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
That carries unanimously. The consensus agenda is approved.
Mr. Clark, the sound of regular movement? The next item is approval of the regular reading agenda. I entertain a motion to approve the regular movement.
How many a motion to approve the regular reading agenda?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aproves, hearing none, that passes. Mr. Clark?
Next item is a presentation by Mayor Edwards, a proclamation recognizing Twisted Sisters Book Club Appreciation Day.
Are they here? Twisted Sisters?
After Twist Coffee Cafe in the city of South Fulton, that's the first one.
My armor failure. You know, it's always good to set an example for our children in education. You know, when children see us doing what they need to be doing, reading and enjoying books, it makes a difference, so I'm honored to give this proclamation, uh, that reads, "On Saturday, October twenty-fourth, two thousand fifteen, Mrs. Jerelyn Gambrera, with thirteen ladies from the South Fulton community formed Twisted Sisters Book Club." Now, I don't know what Twisted Sisters is. I don't think I want to know. "Where the book club was formed to create a social, therapeutic, academic, scholarly, and bonding, bonding atmosphere in their community. And the name of the book club was a result, was as a result of the name of the place we all first met, the Twist Coffee Cafe. The Twist Coffee Cafe is owned and operated by Kim and Chris Joiner, with the purpose to create awareness of the small family-owned businesses, and the importance of supporting small businesses in the community. The book, the book club serves as a focal point to bring an awareness to the communities, the importance of reading and, and, and to be a role model to our youth, realizing that reading is knowledge and knowledge is power. In the two years we have been in existence, we have donated to mommies without mommies, victims of Hurricane Harvey and Irma, and Irma, and the Breast Cancer Foundation. So now therefore be resolved, the Mayor and the City Council of the City of South Fulton, congratulate Twisted Sisters Book Club on their two-year anniversary, and do, and do hereby proclaim Tuesday, October twenty-fourth, as Twisted Sisters Book Club Appreciation Day in the city of South Fulton." Let's give them a hand. Ms. Gill, uh, you know, this is in our community.
Oh, yeah.
I wonder why you ain't, why you not in Twisted Sisters Book Club?
Because I have too much work to do.
You in the ordinance book club.
Exactly, exactly.
All right, thank you so much, I would just like to thank the city of South Fulton. And first of all, Mayor Edwards, you are an honorable member of Tower Club. If you don't remember, you were, uh, we had our, one of our meetings at your neighbor's house, and you came to the book club.
Y'all fit, y'all eat.
We did. Also drink, okay?
I was there for the food.
But again, once again, I thank everyone, and the, um, membership is still open right now. It's only females, but men, if you want to join us, let us know. We'll open it after you, we'll change the name from Twisted Sisters to Twisted Rock. So, thank you once again, Mayor, I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Come on, guys. Group two, come on.
We have two more than just.
Well, I tell you what, let's go in the middle. Come on, Twisted Sisters.
Sorry, guys.
All right, need you all to. Need you all to tighten up a little bit. Councilman Camu, come on over.
I gotta move back, so.
It's a big group. Okay.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Ladies and gentlemen, before we go any further, I'd like to recognize, uh, Ms. Kim Dove, with the Fulton County Board of Education, I'm representing, yeah. Okay, uh, Mr. Clark?
Mr. Mayor and members of council, we have received eight speaker cards. If the first three speakers would please come down at this time, Wyatt Brooks and Mike Bruce, Ms. Juliet Rankins, and Ms. Domenica.
David, Councilman Mayor? I'm here, uh, for a couple of things. One is representing the, uh, community of Cedar Grove. I wanted to ask if you, uh, have received the, uh, paperwork on the fire department stations repaired? Okay, and, uh, the other matter I want to bring up, um, is about the new city. I feel like I'm invested in it, because when this, uh, I call it a dream, came about, I put my income off to the side, and I spent many hours out campaigning. And that's, I'm not the only one, there's a lot of people doing it. And that's how y'all wound up in the position you're in. And what I'd like to know, uh, really from my heart, I met a lot of nice people. I went door to door, uh, a lot of people never knew my name, they'd always say, the guy with the orange hat. And, and when, when it came time for y'all getting sworn in, you didn't even know who I was, I was wearing a suit. So I feel like I, I played a big part of this. And one thing I, I can honestly say from my heart, there was an individual that caught my attention right off the bat, and that's why I got involved with it. And that's Camilla Moore. And I don't understand to this moment, why we don't have Camilla Moore in that position of city manager. She is a go-getter, she works both sides of the aisle, and I want to tell you, I took a lot of criticism from my neighbors when I was out campaigning for this city. You just don't know what kind of words were thrown at me. And I believe in this, I'm retired from Fulton County, I've lived on Cedar Grove Road since nineteen seventy-two, and I want to see this city get off and get going quick. And I really truly feel from my heart, one way we're gonna go and do it, is if we can get Camilla to come to be our city manager. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm here to speak about, uh, video that I saw, uh, the Mayor and the Mayor Pro Tem, when you spoke at Walden Park.
Do you mean it?
Oh, my name is Juliet Rankins, District Four. And, uh, the video was just, I don't know what the context was, but it was a meeting that people gathered like this. And a couple of things I heard, uh, the Mayor was saying that he was okay with the warehouses, as long as you could tell, tell them where they would be placed. Um, and I'm not, I'm not okay with the warehouses, we don't want the warehouses at all. That's a strong position to take, that we don't want them at all. So we gotta negotiate from that kind of position of strength. Also, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, I heard you say that Select Fulton was gonna help us with finding new businesses and companies and jobs and stuff, and I, I don't think we should join Select Fulton at this time. I don't think we should pay to join Select Fulton, it's not going anywhere, it'll be there. Keep our money, we need our money right now, we don't need to join anything, okay? We just got away from Fulton County, we still trying to get away from, we don't need to join anything, it has to be in Fulton County at this time, okay? And coming back to that, what I want to say is, the Mayor said that we should blow the bond to get the parks and ricks fixed, we shouldn't put mandates on them. And I don't want us to go into debt, because we have been going without our money for ten years. We've been neglected for ten years, starved out for ten years, our community shows it. It looks like really bad out here, I don't want, want to use a bad word, but it looks pretty bad out here, okay? So, take our money, pay our bills, and put the money back into the city. Take our money, pay our bills, and put the money back into the city. The people who came, came up to this podium, they were fussing at y'all about parks and ricks, look at our grounds, look at our buildings and everything, they were fussing because Fulton County has neglected them for ten years, that's what they were fussing for, they were fussing at y'all. Y'all have been neglected for ten years, Fulton County neglected them for ten years. Take the money that we have been going without, Mr. Mayor, we've been starving for ten years. Don't give any of our money, we need our money to go to us, thank you.
All right, this is Domenica Chapman, Mr. Marcus Coleman, and this is Linda Collins.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, City Manager, I'm here for two reasons, two reasons only. This is our city, I'm gonna say it again, yes, I was part of the one who fought for it. And I think that we should get on one accord, because what you guys do, it's a, it reflects us. And we just put a bid in for Amazon, and you think Amazon wanna come down here with it? Y'all fighting like, whatever, but these two things that I want to talk about. It was a video I was talking about, the resolution of forty-six, and I've been at home all day looking at the charter, so this is what I pulled out of that charter. Why wasn't the process to remove the city manager that's already outlining the charter, followed by this council, that's one. The second was, resolution forty-six was created legally and voted on by every council, except one, uh, city council member, per the minutes, I looked at the minutes, which is a violation of the charter. This all saying is, you got to be careful what you ask for. You know, when President Obama was in the White House, it was President Obama, President Obama, President Obama. But look what you got in forty-five, and I'm not saying that the manager or whoever, because I don't know. But what I can say, even talking about Josh, let me say something about Josh. If it weren't for Josh, we wouldn't be here, because not one person wanted to represent us in the legal fight. If y'all don't know, the black ones didn't want to represent us unless we put up fifty thousand dollars. That man fought for us and didn't charge us a dime. And again, for city council to treat the employees like that, I think you're out of control. That's all I got to say, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chapman.
Council, Mr. Mayor, forgive me if I'm redundant, I don't think I've heard this before, forgive me if you guys are actually discussing it, and Mayor Pro Tem, thank you for reaching out. Our fellows to the north, our brethren to the north, have passed an awesome ordinance. You have the national statistics that show that African-Americans are four times as likely, uh, to be criminalized, to be punished, punitive, to be arrested, dealing with marijuana possessions, even though statistics show that the rate of usage is the same. Well, in the city of Atlanta, I think blacks and non-Hispanic whites make up about eighty-three percent. If you break it down even further, you have fifty-four percent of African-Americans in the city of Atlanta. Uh, here we are eighty-six plus percent black, now don't get me wrong, I know we govern all races, but the city of Atlanta has a mixed city council with a black mayor. We have an all-black council with a black mayor made up of predominantly black mothers. So if any city should adopt a decriminalization of marijuana ordinance, it should be the city of South Fulton, considering how we help our babies. So I really hope that's on the to-do list. Lastly, I get a lot of complaints from folks, my name is Marcus Coleman, the organization Save Our Cities, uh, about the public comment section here. Now, I've spoken at a lot of different city councils, so I know this is according, according to, uh, uh, code. But here's a suggestion, we're just making South Fulton a trendsetter. You got that card, which you have to leave your information, be it cell phone, business phone, whatever, or email. How about, and I know you can't answer everybody who comes up here to this public comment, but how about we do the extra thing in South Fulton, and reach out, people rush from work, they stop cooking for their babies to come up here and address you guys, and some people never even get an acknowledgement, let alone a response. So I think that would be a trendsetter here in South Fulton, thank you, decriminal, thank you. They called for, uh, Glenda Collins, so if she's here, please come down, Mr. David Williams, please come to the podium, and Mr. Antonio Steele.
Hello, Mayor, Council, Glenda Collins, District Five. Is the new law reducing fines and marijuana for use in, for Atlanta only? If so, how will this new law pass in Atlanta at our courts in the city of South Fulton? I hope the new police chief will address the drug issues in the city, and help reduce the crime, and be a person of commitment to our city, thank you.
Mr. Council, Mayor, first I'd say, um, Mr. Gunn, Mr. Baker, um, I thank y'all for when I call and have a question, or have an issue, that y'all get back to me in a timely manner, and, um, try their best to help me as possible. And Mr. Baker, I want to thank you, because I'm not even your district, and even though I call about stuff in your district, I thank you for calling and talking to me. Um, I have a little different view on the marijuana, wherever y'all decide to make this decision. I taught school for seven years, and to me, kids come in my class, they know my rules. I don't change my rules because this kid hasn't learned faster than that kid, the rule is still the same. So, because blacks get penalized more, that, that's not a good thing, but my thing is, it's a crime, and you know what it is. You took that chance, so when you get caught and something happens to you, that's something you did yourself, okay? So to me, we shouldn't change anything except for if it's a crime, it's a crime. We shouldn't, these are adults, we're not talking about kids, these are adults. You know what the rules is when you come to our city, when you commit a crime in our city, you should pay the penalty. We shouldn't have you, you know, come up with some excuse for you, that shouldn't happen. Now, what I'm here for tonight is, a lot of y'all know, only a couple of y'all I know personally, a lot of y'all ran on transparency, you ran about being honest, you ran about doing work for the city. You ran for things to be a voice for some that don't have a voice, for some mothers who can't come out here, for some elderly who can't get out their house, that's what you ran for. So I want you to take a chance when you get home tonight, and sit back and ask yourself, am I doing what I ran for, am I giving a hundred percent? Because the world is watching what we do right now. And you are the trendsetters for the city of South Fulton. What you do gonna do one of two things, is gonna put us behind eight years, or gonna put us ahead two years. So what you gotta do is come together, to come, to come up, some kind of plan to get this city moving, because it's gonna take all of y'all. Will you like it, don't like, I'm, I'm getting ready to do it, I know you can stop. Get ready to go, I got you. But I'm just saying, you know, all y'all are smart enough, I've met, I've talked to y'all, y'all have the intelligence to make this happen. I wish you the best of luck, work hard, because I live in this city and I'm not moving. And if you don't do your job, I'm gonna be knocking on your door.
Thank you so much.
Is Mr. Steele here? After Mr. Steele, Charlie Parks. De leaving council, Mayor, Mayor, and, uh, city manager, intercity manager, I hope, uh, everyone's doing well tonight, appreciate you all for coming out tonight. Uh, I'm here real basic, uh, uh, I want to talk about going the extra mile in harmony. I attended the last meeting here, and, and let me tell you, as a new potential small business owner coming to the city of South Fulton, I'm very confused. Uh, I am seeing disorder, I'm seeing people that don't get along, I'm seeing, uh, facial expressions during that first meeting, and I am very confused, why in the world would we bring our small business to this coun, uh, this city if we can't get it together? Last time I was here, if I'm not mistaken, and I might be wrong, I think we voted to not continue the search for a police chief, I could be wrong, I don't know. I also think we voted to not, uh, move forward with the city manager, I, I could be wrong. I never got an answer on that, and I liked someone else spoke before. I fill a card out, take the time out to leave my family, come here, right? After work and working hard and not going home, I want answers. I can't sign a lease with my partner and, and his wife until we figure out what the world's going, we don't even know the name of the city yet. It's, it, it, it bothers me to stand here and see an afterman for panels, and we can't get together. Think about President Obama, just like someone just said, think about all the things that he was, was up against, and look at where we are today, nothing against President Trump, because he won the election, you all ran, you won the election, let's get to work. We don't have time to continue to come here at twice a month and once a month, meet with no answers. So alls I'm asking you all to do is for me, and for everyone that's, that's out here tonight, come together. The judge asked, do we have the money to put things together so we can get the course started? Or put, got money going to Fulton County, we don't want to get, pull it together, harmony, go the extra mile. That's what you all are here for. So I appreciate you all for, for the public service, I appreciate for all the fancy things that we talk about, let's get some stuff done off the agenda, let's make sure we move forward, because in good consciousness, I can't bring my partner, we will not invest in a city that can't get it together, thank you very much, so much.
Hello, everyone, this is Charlene Parks, District Six, Councilwoman, Mayor. First of all, thank you all for the great work that you're doing, keep it up, keep trying, do your best, it can only get better, and you can only improve by what, feedback? So I do have some feedback in regards to some firsthand experience that I've had regarding the security of South Fulton, so if you're going to prioritize anything, just make sure we're focusing on increasing the security in our area, I'll give you three examples here. Um, you guys may have seen in the news about the ten-year-old who was trying to be abducted, but the person who called the police for the child, um, is a friend of mine, and she's also a soror, but she called the police and she said, she said that the police did not arrive that day, well, no, they arrived three hours later, right? And they still have not called the mother of the child back in response to what happened in that particular incident. Uh, the response was that the, you know, when you save the child, everything should be okay, so we're gonna keep things moving, so that's unacceptable. Um, secondly, there's a CBS on Campbellton Road, that has been boarded up for several months, apparently. So it was, uh, boarded up since thieves tried to rob the ATM months ago. So the community reached out to the CBS headquarters, and they said it don't have enough money to repair, uh, the place. That doesn't make sense, right? So what you want to do is make sure that someone is following up and finding that particular CBS, and giving those, um, giving that place taken care of and up to par. So let me share an incident that I had, I am the president of Providence Place, the board, um, the HOA, and I had an incident where we had a, we had a video in our community, and we saw where a particular individual stole, stole a van, right? Handing the evidence over to the police department, we also provided two witness statements, right? Gave it to them on a civil platter, other than putting the person in the car and taking them down to precinct ourselves. Finally, the detective, he got it together, locked the person up, apparently they've been apprehended now, but the hoops we had to jump to to get it done was very, very strenuous for me. I'm a full-time employee, I don't have time to keep chasing things that are hanging out. So I just say, please, for our, for helping our department, have the resources they need to better support South Fulton, that's what I have to say about that. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you so much.
First item is under business on page two of three, the resolution to establish a policy relating to budgetary controls for members of the city council. This item is sponsored by Councilmember Jackson, under resolution two thousand seventeen dash zero sixty-three.
I think, uh, council people, Jackson and Baker, uh, statement, Mr. Baker?
Yes, uh, in regards to resolution, uh, that one that you just read, and the following, we're gonna, uh, have them removed, uh, I had a conversation with this, with this, uh, chief financial officer, he's gonna do some research in reference to, uh, the budget, and how it can reconcile to meet the need to propose a resolution in the future. So we'll probably record that up after we meet with the CFO.
Do we need a motion to hold?
Are you calling or removing him?
Removing, okay. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna remove him, because we probably sponsored one together. They're both very similar, so we're not gonna. Yes, we're removing him.
Mr. Clark, we don't need a motion for removal, right?
No.
All right, signed in this item. Number, number three, resolution to amend the Open Gov program relating to transparency and routine reports.
and routine reporting of revenues, operations and expenditures of each city department by the fifteenth of each month for the preceding month. This item is sponsored by Councilmember Jackson under Resolution 2017 dash zero sixty-five.
Um, I need to add co-sponsors, uh, Gums and Rouse to this, um, and I would like to make a motion to adopt with one change. Um, item number three, uh, it says this, well, I actually, the city manager is what it should be. Um, and then it's the monthly, so that's what it was. Is that amazing? So I'd like to make a motion to adopt, uh, with one change.
Okay, uh, Colonel Gums.
Question, was the, was this amendment, was the entire resolution rewritten or, so it's still the same resolution number from previous? Okay.
It's just changing to add for the fifteenth of each month, we should receive report.
Okay, I just get it.
So it's a different number, same resolution, but it's being amended by creating a report on the fifteenth of each month.
Okay.
But this is a new item under the new number. Uh, Mayor Protem?
Just for consistency, I know in the past when it's been amendment to existing, uh, resolution, you tended to underline the new text. And with that being said, like you said, number three, it starts at after website in the second line and everything subsequent to that is the new, new narrative. And also, my question is, you said, city manager, um, this deals with the financials. I feel comfortable with it staying with finance because they're ultimately responsible for that information, so...
But I would like it to be under, I would like the city manager to be responsible to get us, the council, the reports. That all comes under her permission, her or his.
Okay, so, um, I just want to make it clear that in terms of the report, that the financial information should come to CFO in addition, because if it's available online, we should, we would have access to.
I'm not accepting that. I want it to be the city manager's shell. He and I just went through this together. Again.
Any further?
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Okay, quick question. Can you, um, Councilwoman Jackson and, you said it was city, city clerk, he's going to... Who, who did you say you went through the resolution with?
What do you mean?
You said you just went through it today.
No, 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 today, I, because I saw what he had on here and I know what I, the amendment that I made said city manager.
Okay, so with this being an online platform, are you speaking about a report that you want her to provide to the council? Because we will all get access to the online platform. So...
I want her to divide us with...
A written report. Okay, so would that come out of another, would that come out of the financial? Because this is an online platform. Um, so, are you...
Uh, Mayor Protem?
Um, I was comfortable with moving forward with the report on the fifteenth, but again, I don't want to miss the financial reports coming from anybody other than the CFO ultimately. And so, again, this is to be transparent to everybody, not just the city council.
Oh, no, 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 I want everybody to have it, but I want her to divide us with a report for the fifteenth of each month. We've had a lot of problems as it stands.
Are you?
Um, no. Again, again, the only thing is, I, I think the only point where we might have some difference of opinion is relative to the department, I think, is some assing of...
So, how about this? Are we able to have, I mean, he's already gonna prepare the report. Can we get it from the city manager that is by the way of the CFO? I mean, what, what is it that we need to do to move this forward?
Are you talking, are you referring to the...
I was actually trying to speak to the city manager.
Madam City Manager has a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Repeat your question.
So my question was, being that this is an online pla- uh, platform, Councilwoman Jackson is requesting a review report of the finances. Am I correct in saying that? Okay, so the CFO would be able to provide that information, but I, she wasn't from the city manager. So is there a way that we can move to compromise to move this forward? Or if you needed to say again?
Okay, first of all, the, the CFO, he's working under the city manager, but she is responsible to get that report to us on a monthly basis. So basically, it's coming from her. I don't care who does it.
Okay.
I just want...
Madam Manager?
I would like, if I may, uh, to Councilwoman Gums, kind of for some clarification, what you've got are two separate things. Prior to the approval of the Open Gov resolution, there was a resolution by someone that said you would get financials once a month.
What?
So you already had that resolution in place. Then you passed an Open Gov resolution for an open government program for transparency within the city. This is a third item that, where before the original resolution for getting monthly financials just said monthly and you went for the end of the month. This is making it the fifteenth of the month. And in addition to giving you the financials that comply with the previous resolution, which is a hard copy, they also want an Open Gov, it made available through the platform. And so that's why there's two things moving here, because you passed two other resolutions that all overlap. And so my question is, does this resolution supersede the other resolution where you required us to give you financials once a month?
Uh, here's my, uh, the, the, uh, Mr. Craig still has the...
I do.
You do, too?
To, Catherine, I'll take that.
Since I, I sponsored the financial, it was to get monthly financial reports and we got a report last month. And so, when we adopted the original Open Gov, it was not specific, because I would envision that that same report that you would prepare, that you would load it up and it would be available to the public. So I would not want to create an additional level of reporting. I just want the information to be readily available to the public. So I don't know that we need this additional date, because we've already addressed it in the, uh, in the prior amendment that deals with budgetary controls and financial reporting. But we will make sure that it is uploaded on the website.
Councilwoman Jackson?
I think she just answered it. She said she would make sure it's done.
Okay.
So, do we need to... So do we need to...
Are we gonna go to the...
Well, she amended for the fifteenth, um...
The month.
Okay, hold on, hold on, Mr. Craig, what do we have on the floor? Do you have a motion?
Well, I do believe Councilmember Jackson read into the record that she, uh, was moving to adopt this resolution with the change under number three, changing the city finance department to the city manager.
Was that her motion?
That's how I read it.
Yes.
That was my amendment.
That was her amendment to the motion to approve.
There, there was a motion to approve.
That's how she read it, yes.
Okay, was there a second?
No.
I'll entertain a motion. I'll entertain...
Oh, okay. I make a motion to adopt, uh, this amendment with the one change for city manager.
Properly moved to second, any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, I mean, this is the, this is the vote? This is the vote? All in favor, raise your hand. All who oppose? That's two to four, Mr. Craig, that makes that motion fair.
All the next items? Sure. The next item under Roman numeral four is a resolution imposing an additional thirty-day moratorium on the issuance of all alcohol licensing permits for age-restricted establishments within the city of South Fulton, that's under Resolution 2017 dash zero sixty-six.
Madam Attorney?
Mr. Mayor and Council, this extends, as the title indicates, this extends the, um, moratorium that's current, currently in place for alcohol licensing. The body actually needs some amendments. We wanted you guys to see, um, the current moratorium. It would just extend it for thirty days so that we can get, um, the licensing issue worked out with GCIC to have, um, the fingerprints and background checks for, um, issuance of alcohol licensing. And this is a resolution that can be adopted today.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
And like I said, there are some amendments to make sure, and I believe, um, Mayor Protem has those amendments.
Mayor Protem?
I would like to make a motion for the last, we're asked clause to add additional, um, changes from additional ninety days to additional thirty days in section five to change from July thirtieth, it should be to October thirtieth, twenty seventeen. Section six commence at midnight on October thirtieth, twenty seventeen, as opposed to July thirtieth, twenty seventeen, that's end upon thirty days expiration, as opposed to the ninety days. And finally, in section eight, become effective on October thirtieth, twenty seventeen, as opposed to July thirtieth, twenty seventeen.
Counsel, did you get that?
They're not having it right.
Is that your motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Properly moved to second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. That passes unanimously. Next item, Mr. Craig.
Next item, Roman numeral five, is a resolution authorizing a contract for encroachment to construct small pipelines at Williams Road right-of-way and for other purposes. This item is under Resolution number 2017 dash zero sixty-seven.
I'll entertain a motion. Mayor Protem?
Can the Stanford provide a little background on this?
Um, and I, we've got in the audience as well, uh, the group that is seeking the encroachment represented by Mr. Larry Dingle, who can answer some more specific questions. Uh, generally, the, what this does is it allows a private party to construct a sewer pipeline in the city's right-of-way. That is to assist in the development of property that is actually outside the city limits. The pipeline, a portion of it, would be in the city limits. Uh, the private party would pay for the construction, the maintenance of the pipeline. Uh, my only request, because it's now, there's been a couple back and forth with the city engineer as well, who had some additional, uh, requests into the, the document that he would like to see there. Um, I think that if the council were willing to amend operative paragraph one, where it says that, uh, the mayor is authorized to enter an agreement with SG Property Owner, LP SG, to authorize SG to make, install, construct, replace, maintain, repair, operate, inspect, augment and remove an up to six-inch sewer line along the Williams Road right-of-way so long as SG shall be responsible for the cost of construction and maintenance of the pipeline as, here's the amendment generally, set forth in the proposed contract that is attached to the resolution is exhibit one. That would allow the, uh, city engineers' proposals that were agreed to this afternoon to be entered into. So the, the amendment would be just to add the word generally between as and set in paragraph one.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council. Larry Dingle, twenty-eight, forty-nine, Paces Ferry Road, here on behalf of the permetee in this particular situation. What we're asking for is a little bit of assistance from the city of South Fulton in allowing the, uh, encroachment into the city of South Fulton's right-of-way on Williams Road to install this infrastructure. Uh, I think, and your council has done an excellent job of explaining exactly what we're trying to do and putting a force man within the right-of-way. The only change that is being discussed here that was not part of the original application is that the city engineer was concerned, because this is a dirt road, that actually have paving around the inset for, uh, for the sewer outlets. And so we've agreed on the language that the permetee, permetee acknowledges that the full and final extent of the paving where manholes are located shall be established based upon field conditions and at each manhole shall be subject to the approval of the city engineer. What we're trying to do is to give the city, uh, of South Fulton's engineer, final sign-off on what he believes would be in the city's public health, uh, and, uh, safety and best interest. So answer any questions that you have.
Did you, what, what he read, uh, as an amendment, the change, are, are you saying you're okay with that?
We're very comfortable with that.
Okay. Ms. Willis here.
I would like to make a motion to approve a road authorization authorizing a contract for encroachment to construct small pipeline at Williams Road right-of-way and for other purposes.
Properly moved to second, any discussion? Hearing none? All of those in favor, please raise your hand. That's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council.
Mr. Craig, next item? The next item is eight, ordinance for second reading, amendment to ordinance 2017 dash zero eighteen, ordinance to amend Title Eight of the city of South Fulton Code ordinances to add section eight dash ten fourteen regarding the duties and authority of police officers that's under ordinance 2017 dash zero twenty-six.
Judge, are you gonna pick it?
If there's any question?
And just to remind the council, this was one to help get the courts up and running and to authorize Fulton County police officers to issue citations on behalf of the state.
Attention, Zaha.
I'd like my motion to approve, uh, ordinance 2017 dash zero two-six.
I see. Properly moved to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all to a favor, please raise your hand. That's unanimous. Mr. Craig, next item?
Next item on page three, under Roman numeral two, under the ordinance in section also for second reading, amendment to ordinance 2017 dash zero eighteen, an ordinance to amend Title Eight of the city of South Fulton Code ordinances to add section eight dash ten ten through eight dash ten eleven regarding ATVs and off-road vehicles that sponsor by Councilmember Willis and Mayor Protem Rowell under ordinance 2017 dash zero twenty-seven.
Yes, um...
Ms. Willis?
I would like to have Major Rogers, um, come up to the podium and do a report. I've asked her a little more statistics of the ATV traffic and off-vehicle road traffic that the city of South Fulton has been experiencing and, um, give us some background information on this. I will tell you that this ordinance is, um, a model of the Atlanta legislation and the ATVs and off-the-road vehicles have been plaguing our community for quite some time now. And now, what I have seen is that since A- uh, Atlanta has strippeded their ordinances, um, of course, the activity has pushed, uh, to the city of South Fulton. Now, what we don't want is open season on city of South Fulton. Um, so I've asked her to give us some background information on this and I would ask that we consider approving, well, we approve this ordinance because we do not want open season on the city of South Fulton.
Major?
Major Sheila Rogers, Deacon Council. In regards to the ATVs and the off-road vehicles, the problem occurred and began back last year during the springtime of the... year during the springtime and again this year. In conjunction with parks and recreation, the police department was hired for off duty work in order to deter ATV and off road traffic. What they were doing, they were going into the parks and tearing up the greenery and just causing a large confusion with the person who was trying to lawfully attend the parks and enjoy. So we came up with a plan to A, have police presence, and B, escort them out of the city of South Fulton. The reason we do not pursue, because you have to look at, A, the person on the ATV or the off road vehicle will be possibly injured, the officer who's asked to pursue them will be possibly injured, or the innocent public that may become involved unknowingly. Our pursuit policy currently does not include ATVs. The question is, how do you get rid of them? Increased fines would be a deterrent. Increased fines after that would be a deterrent, being able to actually apprehend the persons at fault. Usually, they are persons, not even citizens of the city of South Fulton. On a recent arrest that we've made, we've made arrests for persons from Newton County and from down in the Grange, and these were persons over forty years old. What our plan included was to be at points of contact, to have them avoid coming into the park. This worked. After the first couple of weeks, the first week they came in early during the spring, the second week we were able to have police presence. We had officers escort them out with blue lights and signs, but not at a high speed. Our purpose is to keep them out of the city. The ordinance will help. As far as just specific stats, yes, some arrests were made, some copies of charges was made also. But the main thing is, liability wise, we don't want anyone to be seriously injured or to be in a fatal funnel, to become statistics as far as death when you're talking about off road vehicles. Current law does not allow them on city streets. They cannot go in the parks and tear apart either.
Okay. Let me ask a question, Major, coupled. Are the signage in the parks, does it speak against this and does it have a code section on the sign?
The Fulton County code ordinances are listed at the park. Most people ignore it, but with our presence, we've been able to substantially decrease the problems in the parks and people are able to enjoy it.
Secondly, I don't believe in high speed pursuit. I don't believe in high speed pursuit, but I understand that there are circumstances where it is needed capital crime.
Correct.
So what I just heard you say, that I should kill somebody that's on ATV, you ain't going to run after.
We have to make quick decisions in the circumstance that you've got a full park and you've got someone cutting across the park. If we start cutting across the park, we find out that we will get our citizens who are in the park enjoying it uproar. As a parent, I'm going to run and try to find my child.
That I understand, that I understand that. I mean, I'm not talking about if there's pedestrians around, but I know that we make a clear distinction when it comes to pursuit, and that is if you commit a capital crime, then all bets are on.
Correct.
So I'm saying if he commits a capital crime and jumps on ATV and crawls across the field, I think we should go after him. Do I understand some?
Liability issue also.
The other thing, I mean, you have to call it, the other thing is, I didn't hear, if I heard you correctly, you escorted people out of South Fulton. Why don't we take the vehicle?
If we can stop, some ATV drivers will stop, some will not.
No, I'm not saying that. You say we escorted him out.
Okay.
All I'm saying is, instead of escorting him out of our city, why don't we take his vehicle and he gets some tokens?
That has occurred. On some occasions, ATVs, I think it's less than five gallons, they will run out of gas. So for those who have been caught, it is not because that, you know, we were going fifty miles or a hundred miles an hour to get them, it's because they ran out of gas or they stopped. If they can't prove they own it, we take the vehicle, we give them a copy of charges, and we've done that. The last year, we have a substantial amount of ATVs, and then you have to prove that you own the vehicle. So the word got around, we use social media also, and we were able to take that property and keep it, and after a certain number of days, we came five to four for you.
Counselor Willis, I just think that if your breaking in law is clear, I don't care who owned the motorcycle, whatever it's called, ATV, that we need to keep it and then allow whoever is the owner of the vehicle, they can come in and reclaim their vehicle. I just don't think saying, get out of the city, is just a good thing, you know? We have to put some, you know, we have to put some gang to game here, and I think that we should repossess these vehicles when they have broken them.
And let me clarify what I said. We have done that also.
And if I'm talking about everybody, you come in here, I've seen them, I've seen them doing wheelies in residential areas and with the front end up and all this kind of stuff. I'm saying if you get caught with that, one thing we're for sure, that that vehicle would be parked in our yard. That's all I'm saying. And I mean, there shouldn't be any circumstances where it's not.
So there was a question about juveniles, and if juveniles are caught with ATVs, how are they handled? And it is my understanding that this ordinance does not supersede state law. So if a juvenile is caught, how is, how are they typically handled?
We treat it the same way. If you can't prove you own the vehicle, it comes to us. You have to go through a procedure to bring ownership paperwork to precinct. They can't prove it is safe.
Mr. Colley?
Yeah, a few questions. More on this pursuit, how do you, so we have these penalties for tickets, how would we write tickets for people if we don't catch them, if we're not? So these tickets would only be for people who run out of gas?
No, the tickets would be for the persons who are apprehended. If they abandon the vehicle, we encamp the vehicle. So for those who actually have some that will stop and talk and see what's going on who, for many reasons, breaking the law, we'll issue citations as appropriate, and we'll deal with it, and hopefully the word to get around is not to come to the area.
The, the second question is actually for legal counsel. There are two penalties of jail time, and for, for those that are caught, that are juveniles, are those penalties enforceable?
The two penalties, one is for a third violation and one is for also a third violation. The first getting thirty, the next getting sixty. The juvenile would have a separate process through the juvenile justice system, and if this would lay into that, I don't know the specific answer, if this would provide the guidelines. I know the juvenile code was rewritten about two years ago, and so I don't know how this would play into that and can get you an answer on.
My next question would also be for, for, the, if, doing a fact pattern, if we, if we catch someone who's from Newton County, and we, would we send them to jail, would they go to jail in Newton County? Because we don't have a jail, right? So sixty days in jail at our, the rates that we've been quoted would be thirty-nine hundred dollars. So we have to pay a public defender, they're facing jail time, they're entitled to a public defender, we have to pay other work costs, and then we have to pay nearly four thousand dollars to house someone who doesn't live in South Fulton for this penalty. So we actually end up paying. Would that be correct?
Yes, I mean, you would, if the person has been cited within the city and by the city for the third and fourth violations and so on, then yes, under, until and unless there is a contract for jails, then there would be a price, and I'm not familiar with the price that you quoted, but, and so the city would have to pay that to house. If the person meets indigent status, they would be entitled to a public defender.
Right, so, or as a case of a third and fourth violation, and the quotes that we got to the jail is what, between fifty and sixty-five dollars a day, suggests that's a point of political education. Every time we jail someone in the city of South Fulton, we will be paying to house them. So we probably want to make sure that whatever fines we assess, we can get, we can recoup that money so we're not paying to house people.
Absolutely.
And my last question is for the officer, you talked about the one individual who was forty. I was just wondering, do you have stats for, in the past year, how many people in total have been arrested or apprehended, and what has that age range been?
I do not have the stats, and part of people be age range or the number of, and we can leave that for you, make sure it's forty.
Thank you. Mr. Colley, because the press up and down, I don't want people to leave that they can't go to jail. Oh, we don't have a jail, we got jail.
I didn't even say that you couldn't go to jail, just that every time we send them, we're paying to house them.
Oh, yeah, we pay, and we reimburse them.
Yeah.
We got jail. I'll entertain you for some more.
Okay. I have one more question for.
You spoke twice. Let me say this, you've had the floor twice, if anybody else doesn't have anything else to say on this issue.
One more thing, say, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know it was going to be like that. So, so I'm a little concerned about the collateral damage, or, I just think the penalties are a little high. Auto national, the people that I see on these, which I do have a problem with, but unfortunately, there are a lot of young African American men, I don't want to send them to jail, I don't want to pay four thousand dollars to house them for two months. I think the penalties, like I said, I think the penalties are a little high, but I, I would like to offer an amendment, and it's a simple amendment, and that is just that the fines, and I did email this to Councilwoman Willis, but that the fines that we collect, whatever they are, but that the fines that we collect be used to create an ATV park so that we have a place that is appropriate for people, for people to ride ATVs, and it could actually be, it could actually become an attraction. There are places, none near here, but there are places that have ATV parks, and they make lots of money.
Will you hear this?
Yes.
Well, I don't accept that amendment to take fines and create an ATV park. We are building up, we're standing above our government, and so we need to make sure we have a full assessment of our finances. I do want to clear up that I am not, these fines are high to deter the action, so I'm not trying to accommodate criminals, of people who come in our city and break the law. I don't want to see African Americans go to jail either. I mean, but I am not going to accommodate when they come in our city and break the law. And, and, and we are giving them three times before they even face jail time. So the first time, they have a lot, they have a fine of seven fifty, the second time, they have a fine of a thousand dollars. And so the third time they come in our city and break the law, that is when they are subject to penalty and a minimum of thirty days of jail. So they have three times to break the law in our city before they even face jail time.
Mr. Colley, you still have the floor? Okay. Mayor Portem and then Councilwoman.
I think I'm leaving right there.
You're gonna leave it right there. Councilmaker?
Well, I hope you don't really leave it right there all the way, because I too had a conversation with Councilwoman Willis in reference to this, in agreeance with Colley to a certain extent in reference to the younger people. And the penalties, actually not necessarily the jail time, but more so the financial obligation of seven hundred and fifty dollars, a thousand dollars, we discussed, and I wanted to bring it public so you can acknowledge if you would still accept the friendly amendment of five hundred, from that seven fifty to five hundred, and from that one thousand to seven hundred and fifty dollars that we discussed in reference to these penalties. A lot of our young people are on those ATVs, and while I believe they should be penalized, most people's full month rent is seven hundred and fifty dollars. If you have a speeding ticket, it's a hundred and fifty dollars. If you are an authorized licensed driver, you don't pay more than a hundred and fifty dollars for your citation on average. Because it is a nuisance, I do understand the severity of it, and I know how much of a strain it is on our law enforcement officers, but they don't collect the fines directly. So I make a motion to accept this ordinance, twenty seventeen dash zero two seven, with my amendment of seven hundred and fifty dollars to five hundred, and the one thousand dollar for the second violation to seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Let me, let me just say something. It's time for us to be accountable for what our children did.
Hello, hello.
If they're breaking your house, you have a problem. And I'm, I'm scuffling with the fact that if you ain't got no money, what you doing with that machine? I'm scuffling with that, to say to you. And lastly, I'll say this, this is, Bill, that was opinion, I respect, appreciate all my colleagues. But ladies and gentlemen, you hear what she said, they pick up two people where they came from? It's the same thing that happens on all national highway. We pick up people from Clayton County everywhere on all national highway. It ain't our people. But you know why we pick them up? Because of man over in Clayton County that don't play the radio. Hello. Yeah, the sheriff in Clayton County that don't play the radio. He's a friendly man, I call him walking small. So they come over here. So what we gotta do is, we got to tell people as we move forward as a city, not here. And I know children, I raised my children, I always told them, say, you know, there's consequences of what you do. So you do something wrong and something happens, you ready to pay consequence? And I don't want nobody, I don't want nobody to put a child in jail, I mean, I, you know, but I'm gonna get that motorcycle, whatever, ATV, I'm gonna get that ATV. Mr. Colley, so that means he don't go to jail, I'd rather see him go home and I deal with his parents.
That's right.
And then I, and not even worry about the fine, I go deal with your parent, but you go, somebody gonna pay to get that machine out of the park. So I think to me, that's a better alternative, you know? Let's get the machine, and if they're minors, let's take them to the parent, and then the parent go and get the machine out. Somebody's got to pay what they're up, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah. You have a motion, and it was accepted, I appreciate it. With respect to everything you may have said, I'm the only person up here, again, who knows what it's like personally to be in what the shoes that they're standing in, and I do understand the importance of that. But if anybody in here would be willing to come out on Saturday, like Judge Sellers did, to Next Level Boys Academy, where you can meet some of these guys, whereas you can actually find out that these problems can be solved at the root, I mean, at the stem, you have to go to the root of, and we have a systematic problem that we have to address, and albeit we're here for this law, we can't just keep looking at it on a surface level. So with respect to that, I appreciate y'all accepting of the amendment, because it's a socio-economic issue as well.
All right. Kathy, ready?
In addition to that, we would like to make the effective date on this ordinance number first till May with the move of the law.
Do you have that, you have that in spirit?
Yes, sir.
Okay, it's been properly moved to second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hands. That passes six to one, Mr. Colley, vote to back.
Thank you, Congress.
Mr. Klett?
The next item is Roman numeral three, an ordinance granting Atlanta Gas Light Company a franchise agreement, that's ordinance two thousand seventeen dash zero twenty- a franchise agreement, that's ordinance two thousand seventeen dash zero twenty eight. I'll entertain a motion.
So that's first read?
This is the, I was gonna say, this is, this is the first read, this would round out the remaining franchise agreements, um, it does have an effective date as of May one, I work with, um, AGL's counsel on that, and it should be noted that the fees are established by, uh, the Public Service Commission, the calculations of these are established by the Georgia Public Service Commission.
Right, they admit what, I'll try to give them one. Any further, uh, Mr. Cleet, you all?
Like some of the other franchise fees, um, will the citizens have to pay any kind of pocket money?
I would need to check with their counsel on how they, um, roll it into their bills and things like that as far as Atlanta Gaslight is concerned, because I think, it's my understanding, it depends on the company, so I would need to go and check with, um, their counsel on that.
Mayor Porten?
I want to know, I want to know, Councilwoman Gill, you know, I know there was a previous outstanding question that I had raised about them, uh, imposing a cap, how much could be passed on to the end user, and this came up previously, and I don't think we got a report back on that, so for our next meeting, can we add that information to the finished
Yes.
Any further discussion? Mr. Clerk?
Also for first reading, Roman number four, an ordinance to establish procedures to provide preference to City of South Fulton businesses in competitive sealed bidding for city services, this item is sponsored by Mayor Porten Rowell.
I'll entertain a motion.
First read.
May, I don't want that much. Okay, it's the first read. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
This ordinance is in response to the fact that we've heard throughout the process, particularly as we were thinking about solid waste management, the importance of making sure that local businesses have the opportunity to participate and compete, and so this establishes a local preference for, um, businesses, um, that can prove that at least fifty percent of the business owners live in the City of South Fulton, and so, um, while this is the first read, um, this is in response to hearing, um, feedback on, from you.
Uh, it don't require that they have an office?
No, office.
There's a, there's a distinction, um, between, uh, local business and a locally owned business, so, um, well, actually, the local business has an office with one employee in the city, and the locally owned business has all the requirements of a local business plus fifty percent of the owners live in the city.
Where I came from, you're in need to have his office, but that's okay.
That's why we want to make sure.
Now, when it comes to storing, uh, is it, does it, best I want, I want people to know two.
You can increase it if you want. I have to make sure I can get it through our council, so it's the first read, so we can, we can talk about.
I'd like at least three and five.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm cool, I'm not gonna say anything, I'm, I'm not in it.
Okay, and a good move, so next time when it comes back, you can increase it.
Okay, all right, mm, okay.
We'll take ten.
Any further, any further discussion, I'm not suggesting that, Mayor Porten, I'm not suggesting that. Okay, well, you think about it, we'll think about it, we'll come back and we'll decide what that percentage gonna be, all right?
Mr. Clerk?
Right, your last ordinance for first reading, Roman number five, amendment to ordinance two thousand seventeen dash zero twelve, addressing the jurisdiction of the Code Enforcement Board, that's ordinance two thousand seventeen dash zero thirty.
Attorney, you want to say something?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, this is, uh, we've now had a couple Code Enforcement Board meetings, and what we've learned through that process is once again, we need to revisit the jurisdiction, um, of the Code Enforcement Board specifically to add the International Property Maintenance Code and the International Building Code, which there have been some debate, but the citations that had been issued prior, um, to the city adopting the Code Enforcement Board ordinances, uh, many of them contained citations for violations of the International Property Maintenance Code and the International Building Code, and so the board had been enforcing those in prior days, this, as a first reader, would allow the board to continue to enforce, um, those code sections for which there are current and pending citations.
Does their training include that?
Their training, their training can, and it's our understanding, and we've been working with our own code enforcement folks in the city, uh, that it should include that code.
Any further conversation? It's the first read, I got it, here and done, Mr. Clerk?
Next item is the City Manager's briefly update.
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, just a couple of things, you have the written document in front of you, and we'll entertain any questions about the document that you desire, but just wanted you and the residents to know that the solid waste and recycling RFP was posted to our site today as we committed, and so it is out, it will be out for, um, an extended period of time according to the timetable we gave you the last time, so we're beginning that process, and so we're down that road of solid waste and recycling. As it relates to next Tuesday, um, I asked the mayor, and the mayor agreed to hold a special city council meeting next Tuesday, October thirty first, um, at five o'clock, we'll get it early so the goblins in you all can go home to trick or treat, if that's your desire, um, but unfortunately, we were not able to have the TAN documents ready for approval tonight, and so we're anticipating having them ready for next Tuesday, and so it will be important for us to get your approval on that resolution in order to process the TAN, uh, because as you know now, tax bills still are not out, and we're in the last week of November, and we have no confirmation as to when they will be out, or what the deadline date is going to be as to when they're expecting to have the money in, we're still hoping that it's still December fifteenth, but the bills still are not out as of today, and so we will be getting approval of the TAN, um, it'll give us the opportunity to do an more in-depth discussion on transition that you've all asked for, as well as we anticipate and hope we have the court's, um, memorandums of understanding also available to execute prior to November first, and the attorney would also like to add an ethics item, so I just wanted to announce in the public what items will be on the agenda for the special city council meeting next Tuesday, October the thirty first at seven o'clock PM. In addition, we have been working for the items that you see, um, we have begun our renewal process for our business license, and so they are working diligently to get those ready, prepared, in order for them to go out, which is quite important, um, the employee handbook, you, uh, this evening sent a copy of the draft from the HR department of the employee handbook, uh, we're encouraging you to go through the handbook, if you have any questions about the items in it, or would prefer to have more information, the HR office has agreed to set up appointments, and she's willing to do them two at a time, if you all would like to double up and answer any of your questions that you might have about the employee handbook that was emailed to you, uh, tonight, and getting that information done, um, and I will answer any questions about the written report that you might have.
Any questions? Mr. Cleet, uh, then, uh, Councilman Cleet and then Councilwoman Willis.
Okay. City manager, I have a few, uh, one of them is, uh, what is the update on the Zaline Moratorium? When will our website become fully functional? I did have sanitation, that's okay now, um, when are we gonna meet with, um, people three sixty and first class, because they said, when they made their presentation at our last meeting, that they wanted to meet with us so that they could determine which direction, uh, they, you know, that we wanted them to go in, um, so that item, when will we receive the twenty eighteen, uh, budget book? And, um, the other three items, one is, one is about a proposed warehouse and official approval letter that I don't understand, um, and it's under the planning.
I need to answer that as part of this. Could you send me information on that rather than tonight as a part of this report?
Well, I'll stop there.
I'll answer the other questions.
The other ones.
So that one about a warehouse, I, no, I don't want to be.
Yeah, because the last three relate to planning, so I'll go send that.
Um, we are working diligently to, and the staff has met, and we have also discussed with the mayor about moving, removing the moratorium, we will be bringing you a recommendation on that for our next meeting in order to be able to do that, the consultant for the website was in the building month of Tuesday through Friday of last week, he met with all of our current departments as well as the transitioning departments, have showed them what they need to do, he will be back on the tenth of October to upload all of their forms, all of their information, everything should be loaded, uh, he's back on the tenth to the thirteenth of November, as it relates to the three sixty and first class, first choice on that, they will be doing the second half of your training on Friday, we worked with your consultant, uh, the clerk did, he real, he said that he would not need all day, so, and the, he gave permission and the clerk gave permission, so Friday at one o'clock is when three sixty and the consultants will begin to talk to you as a group as to how they plan to begin to move and to proceed forward, um. The budget books, departments have submitted their goals and objectives, um, you have seen the organizational charts, what we will do is to publish what we have, it will not contain performance measures or anything like that, um, so we are beginning to work with that, and hopefully by the first of December, a final document will be ready for publishing. Did I miss one?
No.
I was writing kind of quick, so, thank you.
Anything else? I, I think Mr. Cleet, thanks.
So we have, uh, two weeks ago, um, during the last city manager's report, I acquired about, uh, the costs associated, because I, I do want us to keep our eye on all the transitioning departments, um, the next apartment to come over is Parks, um, they're going to have several employees that need new uniforms, uh, fifty-one vehicles that are gonna need new decals, uh, the park signs throughout the city, I expect, will all have to be changed as well, and it's also my understanding that those vehicles fuel up here at, um, Stonewall Town, and so I just wanted to see if there was an update, have we, uh, identified vendors or possible vendors, and the costs associated with, uh, all of those things, new uniforms, new signs, a contract for, uh, discounting gasoline.
Councilman Cleet, all of that information, uh, will be contained in your transition update, but just real quickly, just to kind of touch bases with you, yes, all of that would need to be changed, currently there is an existing contract for a uniform, um, provider, in fact, almost everybody uses about the same uniform company, and so we have the estimates, the initial estimate is starting, however, only with two shirts, so that, because the number, how much of the cost depends on, on what you buy with that, and so that's what you will see with that, the vehicles is a different, uh, situation because you've got to know what size, how much you're working with in order to determine the cost, uh, but we're continuing to have people to look at it using what is on the code vehicles, and hopefully to be able to give us an estimate from at least two people as to what it would cost in order to replace them, if we were to take fifty-one vehicles, I am not so sure, I don't want all fifty-one vehicles, those that won't pass ignition tests, I don't want, I don't want to pay for those, because I can't get a license plate, I, so, I really don't need to take that, so then, we'll she back those out as to when we're doing that, and parks will be available on Tuesday, and we can go into further detail about the cost and what all of that will be.
Let me just, the last thing about the gas, because I know that's gonna affect our police department when we bring them over.
Well, gas currently, we have an arrangement through QT, I think, QuickTrip? Wrong state, QT, somebody else knew what I was talking about, with, uh, QuickTrip, and they provide us with the fuel, and that's where code as well as planning or any of those fuel up, um, we're currently, uh, looking to see whether there's any other arrangements out there, because there's some other people that also do the same thing, because you're correct, they will not be able to fill up at this site, uh, after January the eighth when they transition over.
Let me add some, let me add something to that group, are we, are we comparing the actual vehicles, uh, with the asset management list?
We're matching them, yes, sir, with the VIN number, which is the best way to match it.
Okay, uh, oh, I want to ask about one truck in particular, and that's the one that's over this with Code Enforcement says police, now I asked you all when we first started this, this, this transition that, number one who bought the truck, uh, because if the truck was bought by asset D for, then that truck should have been stripped down, and it should have had our emblem on it, and should be in, in the, uh, Code Enforcement Department, uh, I don't understand how Code Enforcement, our police department can, uh, have a Code Enforcement person when we taking Code Enforcement from there, so I know what they're gonna say, but that doesn't make any sense, all right, so if that money, if, if we, if SSD money was paid for that truck, then that truck needs to be in our asset management list, and so I, I, I really like was to see that, and lastly, I want to tell everybody that, you know, we get a lot of calls, all of us here get a lot of calls, police and fire and things of that nature, I want you to know that those departments are still with Fulton County, not that we don't care, because we truly do care, but you are paying Fulton County a premium for them to run your police department and your fire department, direct them calls to mob and errand, but call us just on the side. You know, but I, and I'm serious about that, because people, people call us, we get blamed for a lot of stuff that we really don't have control of, yet, and we won't have that control until the first part of next year, so, and public works is another one, is another, all of that is within the realm of Fulton County, and when you call and they tell you that where they're sitting now, they taking care of that, they lying, they're lying to you, and your money is paying for them to lie to you, so all I'm saying to you is just being real frank, we want, we, all of us here, we're concerned about the level of service that we're getting in our, in our city, but they're not giving us anything, and we need to make sure that we get the level of service, at least the same level we had in two thousand sixteen, that's what the AIG agreement said, so, just want to make that clear, because all of us get a lot of. So, just want to make that clear, because all of us get a lot of calls about police and fire, and we are concerned. When they, when y'all call them, you call us, we're going to call them. All right? Because we want to make sure that everything's all right. But I thought it, it was best that I make that clear, uh, to everybody that continues to worry about, uh, police and fire and things of that nature. All right, Mayor Prokhorov?
A question. Can you tell us when the staff will be sitting down with Fulton County on the reconciliation? That's what I'm eager to hear about. Has that meeting been scheduled, or where we are, where are we in that process?
We met with, we met with Fulton County yesterday on the reconciliation. And we are expecting to get an invoice from them.
Invoice?
And that invoice will show that we do not owe them as much money as we had anticipated. Because they went back and did actuals versus I.G. in the budget. And so, we'll see in this next invoice that we don't owe them. You remember, we were paying half of certain months, and that was due by the end. And so, they're, based on the figure that they gave us, a lot less than we thought we would be paying. Pardon?
They told you that their invoice was going to be less than what we anticipate? Is that what you said?
Yes, because if you recall, for the first of May, June, and July, we were paying, they held off getting any money until September. We only have to have to pay them half, and then the other half had to be due by October. And then, the, starting in September, it was the full amount at the fifteenth of the month for the complete month. And so, as they reconcile what we have paid them through September thirtieth, and what we thought we owed them by only having paid half, we find out we owe them a lot less.
Oh, okay, so that's what you said.
Yes.
Money, okay, that, that, from the true up.
From the true up, so we're going to owe them a lot less than we thought we were going to owe them.
Oh, okay.
To the tune of about over five million dollars.
That's a lot of that.
That's less.
Okay, all right. Mayor Prokhorov, and then Ms. Gilley.
I was just going to ask, as a part of our meeting next Tuesday, if we can get.
Uh, they don't have.
Thank you.
Be glad to.
Ms. Gilley, you got that?
Um, the I.G.A. will forever be a thorn in my side. And Article one in the I.J., I.G.A., paragraph two, says, "They are supposed to provide documentation whenever we ask for it." There is a lot of fluff between the budget of twenty sixteen and what we are paying for in addition to that budget. And they have not done any true up with that. And they have not provided any documentation for that, as I know of, except numbers on the page. So, I have a real concern about that.
All right. Thank you, uh, is that it? Uh, Mr. Cleve, did you want to get the?
Okay, yeah, we're not going to, we're not going to have a meeting for another two weeks.
Two weeks?
Two, one more week. We're going to need three. That's not a, that, we won't make it long.
Look, look, all right, it's good. Make a motion, give it.
Make a motion. How many motions go to executive session for personnel?
The top of the room, the second, I'll go to the third. Favorite, I. I for women, I'm going to have it, I can. How about you?
Yeah, you may.
Good, we're adjourned for executive session.
Wait, I have a, I have a, I would like to, to make an announcement before we, before we leave, that we will not be with you all again until November fourteenth. Um, next week, we're going to have, yes, I, I won't be able to, we're not going to do this. We're not going to do this party. So, let me just say this. We have two very important meetings coming up, uh, international. The first is November eleventh. I, I, I need to make this announcement. How do I do that? Because I, because I asked you that, I asked, I asked to make this. So, I just would like you just, a room for executive session. Can I, I'm sorry, as the maker of motion, can I withdraw my motion for executive session?
Yeah, that's a motion?
Yes, that's a motion.
Can you give a second? What'd you say?
Okay, second.
Okay. I've removed the second, he withdrew his motion, uh, for executive session. So, go ahead, but consider that you're not having a second session. All right, all of those in favor say aye. All those. All of those in favor, raise your hand. He wants.
I want, I want to go to, I want to go to executive session.
Listen, hold up, I got a motion on the floor with a second. Ms. Jackson, what he's doing is, he wants to, he made, he made a motion to go into executive session. Now, he wants to withdraw that motion, so he can say something. I don't know what it is. But, uh, I'm at this point of voting now. All those in favor of withdrawing that motion, raise your hand. All those, all those, again, raise your hand.
I'm going to say, I don't need to say.
Okay.
Everyone can check their email.
That was good.
I ain't doing that.
I would say the most to close the executive session. I make a motion to close executive session?
Second.
Is there anything you want to make? I can't mind executive session, it's good.
Yes, sir. There is a motion made to accept the resignation of Ruth Jones as the city manager, and that motion passed five yeas, two nays. And it is effective October twenty fourth.
Okay. I want to say, and this is just me as mayor, I'm very sad about this decision. We have a lot to do. We have a lot to do and a long ways to go, but I know that we'll make it. So, I just wanted to say that, I want to say to all the employees that this is a decision that will be made tonight, that our city must go forward. In light of, keep your heads up. Keep your heads up. And remember that we're here to stand up a city. All folks who've been elected to office, you're here to serve, and you're not here to be served. That's all I have to say. I'm just sad to me in light of everything that we have had to go through. From newspaper articles to television comments. We continue, we continue to give ourselves a face that we don't have to have. I do.
Mr. Mayor.
Ruth, I want to tell you thank you for everything that you've done. I'm not in agreement with this. I, um, feel that we should have waited until Jan- January thirty first. We did not have a plan on who's going to be the city manager. We don't have a plan on how we're going to move forward without a city manager. I want to thank you for everything that you have done thus far. I am hurt that this has been done, and I apologize.
Yeah, I would just ask, in compliance with the charter, so as not to violate the charter, if each of you would state publicly your reason for your vote. Because the charter says you have to state a reason in the resolution. So, if you would, just let me, each, hear from each one of the five for your reason. Ms. Gilley, I sleep it, so if you want to go first, please.
I'm sorry, um, uh, I would like to ask council, is that, uh, correct, that we, um, need to state a reason?
The answer falls under which, which ordinance you're, or which provision of the charter you're acting under? The charter envisions that the city council will terminate the city manager under two provisions. One is for cause, one is without cause, with right of hearing. What I've heard is that there was an acceptance of a resignation effective today, which is, which, and I think that turns on a, a separate question, because what the charter speaks to is termination, not resignation. And so, the question is, is the acceptance of a resignation in the manner that the council has done an act consistent with, um, the terms in which it was offered?
She, she resigned as of January thirty first in twenty eighteen.
Since we're talking about a term, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Uh, that, uh, Mr. Attorney, continue to, to give your opinions.
I think my opinion, having not seen the documents, but having an understanding of them, my opinion is based on presumptions. My, my, confirmed by Councilwoman Willis. If you have a resignation that is dated at a time in the future, and it is accepted at a time today, I'm not sure that that is an acceptance of the term that was offered. In some ways, it is a counteroffer. Just looking at traditional contracts in terms of what is offered and what's not.
May I say something? Did it also, in other words, we are paying her throughout December thirty first, two thousand seventeen. And my con, not concern, I appreciate everything you've done, but the morale in that building with our department heads is the problem as far as with the council. And that's all. That has nothing to do, what we're looking at, if you're staying there, if you're leaving January, you know, there's going to be some individuals that possibly will leave with you, or in, in between that time. So, it's best just, if we could just, you know, do an even clean thing. There's nothing, nobody's firing. We're just saying, and we're still paying her. So, it's not a termination. It's a resignation.
Uh, I would, I, at this time, I entertain the motion.
I think it was legally done.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. I've removed the second in discussion. I'll go to the baby, say aye.
Uh, thank you.